Pilei.
I am a member of the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs.
Ngii ilungu le komiti le zindabazasekaya.
And I'm leading the delegation in front of you that's doing the coastal region in South Africa.
Futi ngi hola lili kumbwe panguenu eli zo sebenza na namul.
I'm also the chair of this session.
Futi ngi ushala uwalu mhlangan.
Let me first ask you all to stand.
Agenke nka denonke uku tinpaga me.
And we are going to observe a moment for prayer and meditation. You are allowed to pray in your own way so that we don't offend anyone, but just take this time to reflect before we start with our proceedings.
Si zo zindla umundu no mundu angai itanda zela ena etwa. Ukuze sanga kubi mundu unelungelelo uki itanda zele ngendla yako.
Amen. Thank you. You may be seated.
Siabonga. Nga shalapans.
On behalf of the Parliament of South Africa and the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs, I want to take this opportunity of welcoming you all to this, our first public hearing in KZN.
Ngimede la i parameende nomniango uwe zasekaya. Ngithandu gunamgele nonke ulomhlangan uwe tu uokala esizo banau.
Let me firstly introduce to you our team. There's honourable members from the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs.
Agenka zisai itimbalamwe ngamba nalo amalu enganyenau uwe zindabazasekaya.
I'm going to start at my far right, Honorable Ramalobeng.
Ngizokala esantlen samso gula umhlone shua u Ramalobeng.
Yes, you can, Claire.
Nga shaisvan.
And seated next to her is Honorable Lequase.
Othleli panguake umhlone shua u Lequase.
To my left is Honorable Kanile.
Esnule nisami umhlone shua u Kanile.
And seated next to her is Honorable Tito.
Othleli telenwakumhlone shua u Tito.
And I am the rose amongst the thorns.
Minage ngiketegile paga tigwa la baba esfazan.
We are now going to... Oh, let me also acknowledge the presence of MP Mthrunu.
Aga futi ngi pauli uba konaguga MP Mthrunu.
I saw MPL Heinz De Boer.
Ngibone no MPL Heinz De Boer.
MPL Sonjika.
No MPL Sonjika.
MPL Shlongwa.
No MPL Shongwa.
If there's any other members of parliament or members of provincial legislature that I may not have acknowledged or noticed that you are here, we welcome you. We also welcome traditional leaders, community leaders, district mayors if they are present. Thank you very much for being here this morning.
Ngithanda uku ti ngamgele bonke abave la guzo zonge indau, klangani sa ba vela e parameende, klangani sa ba vela guxayam tetu, nabanya ba vela uwe zinyindau, nalabenga ba paulile, ogenze uki bakona angzange ngize ngazi ngabo, ngia namgele nonke.
Let me also mention to you that the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs have split into two groups.
Magengi shofu tu uki leli komiti le zindabazasekaya, lihlu gane la ba makembu amabili.
And while this team is here today, we have a team that has started hearings in Limpopo.
Nagoba kuneli nyetimba ge lapas, neli nyetimba le tu eli elapa e Limpopo.
And the reason for this is because we have a deadline and we have to be able to complete our public hearings and public participation within the month of March.
Isizatushalo kuze uki sineskati esu mngamlachuku, ngakoko ubalegi lu uki sihlu ganesi sibela makembu ngoba ngomash, kumele kuba uki sespeydi lu uki siem pakatin.
So we're going to spend the next three days in KZN. Today, we start here. Tomorrow, we go to PMB, and on Wednesday, we go to Lady Smith.
Si kalela pah gu sasa sizo ya e pita marispek, e mvawalo kobe sese ya e Lady Smith.
Okay, let me also acknowledge the staff that's with us from the Parliamentary Committee of Home Affairs. We have support staff, we have communications, we also have protection services. There are too many to mention, but I'm just going to welcome all the staff and thank them also for being with us today.
Agen ngamgele bonke oza uwe tu nalabesa benza na bes vela nabu e parameende abaga nyenami lapabana ngaku lu uki ngaba paula bonke, gotwa ngipaula labonje ngize nabula na namul.
All right, so let's move straight to the purpose of our meeting.
Agesie ngokondi le enjo ngweni iyalo mhlangan.
So as parliament, we have come here to the people on the ground to listen to your views on this very, very important bill.
Nje ngi parameende sisehisi le seza lapagini, ukuze sizo zwa umbono wenu ma ilana nalom tetu osavivinywa ne ovolweni.
Now, this bill which is called the Electoral Amendment Bill...
Lom tetu osavivinywa obizo ngoku ti umtetu, umtetu segelo.
Is as a result of a court judgment by the New Nation Movement and others in June of 2020.
Lom tetu ismomo senkantole omtetu segelo, wenzu aguso otabeni olpatelene ne New Nation Movement mo June 2020.
Very important, I want to outline at the outset that members are here to listen to you and will not ask any questions or respond.
Nkwele kusho zusu kanyo uki amalu ngakona la azonlalela, e ningabuzimbuso ne smpendu ulozotolaga.
And all of the views and submissions that are expressed here will be considered and taken into account when the committee finalizes the bill.
Yonkimone zo veswa lapas izo tatwa, besi i komiti lapo isi hola, i koto ngayo le umbone zo bi vesiwe.
So just to give, continue with the bill and just outlining it, what the Constitutional Court has said that we have to go back and make amendments in order for us to allow for independent candidates to be able to participate or contest both the national and provincial legislatures.
Enjo ngayalo omtetu segelo ge kutwe lapagufanele ubogezu, ukuze uvu nyelu abantu abazmele, uku ti nabobaguazu kunge ne lu ketu.
This means that they'll be able to contest to either get a seat in the National Assembly or a seat in the provincial legislature.
Loko kusho uki bangagwazi uku kunge ne lu ketu, ukuze bangene guxayam tetu skazwe longe, nama guxayam tetu sesfunda zu.
And it means that they'll be able to contest as an independent without having to belong to a political party.
Loko kusho uki bangalenge ne lu ketu, ngapandla uki basbanda kanyeneku mbeltile, gotwa benga banda bazmele.
So just to go through a few points on the purpose of the bill.
Sizo tinthamapuzamba lwa entlosweni yalo omtetu svivinywa.
The Electoral Amendment Bill amends the Act by:
E. Is tribielo somtetu wesu ketu, si tribiele omtetu ngogu, ogokala.
Inserting certain definitions consequential to the expansion of the act to include independent candidates as contesters to elections in the National Assembly and provincial legislature.
Ukufaga isngaze le ztile zimko gwa egnuetweni walom tetu, ukufaga nabange ne lu ketu abazmele xayam tetu skazwe longe, na guxayam tetu sesfunda zu.
B, including a provision that registered parties must submit a declaration confirming that all its candidates are registered to vote in the region or province where the election will take place.
B, ngokbalwa umteshwana oti amakembapa nsiwe. Kufanele tu listamende esklense kusukuti bonka abantu abawamele abangene lu ketu, papalsele uku vota esfundeni nama esfunda zu nsalapo guzo banjua konu ketu.
C, providing for the nomination of independent candidates to contest elections in the National Assembly and provincial legislatures.
Use uklinzewa uklo gwa laba bafunu kunge ne lu ketu ngokusmela, uku ti balenge ne le xayam tetu skazwe longe, na sesxayam tetu sesfunda zu.
D, providing the requirements and qualifications which must be met by persons who wish to be registered as independent candidates.
Ute uklinzeka izmfuno kanyama pepa fanele gilesi mfundo, kufanele uki abantu abafisukpaliswa njengabange ne lu ketu abazmele, bala ngabeza ninasu.
E, providing the procedure that must be followed in the event that a noncompliant nomination of an independent candidate is determined.
I kubehu klinzewa wengu bo kufanele ndelu, uma gbonakali uki konu ngathochelwa uklo gwa bafisukunge ne lu ketu abazmele.
And I'm going to skip some of it and go to one of the other important ones, and that is H, providing for the inclusion of a list of independent candidates entitled to contest elections.
Ngizwa kwe klo gune besenyaku H, osho kute uklinzeka ukfaga gollu lwa bangene lu ketu ngokusmela, abafanele gil uki bangangene lu ketu.
And with that, we are now going to commence with our hearing and allow for submissions from you, the members of the community that are interested in making submissions here today.
Ma njee, njongo basegni, fingalele lili kopele, ngizote dila le lumbutano kububebegi, si vumele na njongo mpagati, ngoba ni vese uvolweni.
Please feel free to speak in the language of your preferred choice as we do have interpreters available.
Zezo kulegile ukulumangoli mlo akolwebele, ngoba bakona bahumu shabazo seiza.
Also, just a few house rules. We are here to discuss the Electoral Amendment Bill, and hence, we will not be taking any service delivery requests or inputs.
O guneke espisuku kta kisuku ti lapasi zo opango ta ba olpatelene is tribielo somtetu svivinyu wesu ketu. Ngikeskwazi uku ukse ngatimbuze patelene ne zghalo ma ilana ne inkonzozompagati.
If you are one of the speakers that wants to make a submission or presentation and you don't want to read the entire document or submission, you can highlight and then you can obviously submit to our staff.
Uma ngabe uku ti uiskulumi kunepa olpete uzole tu la, uangase ukulmelisinde zimbalwa mapuzamba lwa gulelo pepa olpete, besi ulidulsela uwe sinyesezi kulaiskonala.
However, we will only receive a submission from a speaker, meaning someone who has come here and is speaking to the document. We will not accept a submission from someone who is just going to attend and not speak.
Ogokpela go mundu esogwa mugela guye e iloyo ozobe e pete i pepa, azobe ekuluma esegele guluta balwa, umundu ozobe kona ngakuluma nganegesa mugela oktilo kvilage.
And also to allow for maximum participation, we are going to limit you to between three to five minutes. However, if you are complete before that, there's no problem. You can make your submission and you can take your seat. But if you go over the time, I will indicate to you that you need to wrap up.
Ukuze zvumela banta bani ngi ngango gno wenzeku ti batwali choba lo kulumu. Sizo kwele kute uma ngabukulumu utati mzuzu enga enga pezu wemtatu. Uma ngabe wenzegile waliwela ngale wa leo mzuzemtatu sizo kwele uki ume, kantuma ngabe wenzee mzuzemngani gnaleo aknangi.
Let me also emphasize that all COVID protocols must be adhered to.
Ma nguzelelino uki kufanele ihloni shwe imtetepatelene ne COVID.
Please ensure that there is physical or social distancing.
Si kwele bankonse kuki ni krelilene ngowanele.
The wearing of face masks during the duration of this public hearing.
Nisbogili svonyo zetu paga tinalo mhlangan isnowu.
However, we will allow for you to remove your mask when you are speaking.
Na koso kuvumela uki uskipisvonyo sakho umukulumu.
With that, we are now going to be, are going to start. I'm going to be guided by the team. Speakers are coming to this mic? Yes, okay. So you will indicate by a show of hands, and we'll start with the first, first batch of speakers. The mic in front of me is the mic that you're going to use. Please, when you start, introduce yourself. Tell us who you are, where you're coming from. If you represent an organization or you represent a collective, it's always important to know so that we are able to record it accordingly. But also, we want to emphasize that you should indicate to us when you are speaking whether you accept the amendments or not accept. Are you in support or not in support of the current, of the bill in its current form?
Njega manjeke sesizo kalisa imikele eni bona yo ngapambili iiona enzo isebenzisa. Sizo kwele uki umundu ezegiona, uma ngabe uku ti umelele e intlangane tille, kufanele ufiku kaze uzishika mu kaze uki umelele intlangane tille, uma uku ti umundu njozemele, na kona futi kufanele uka zuki umundu zemele, besi uyacho uki ilupi uvofunu kule tu la.
Thank you very much. We can now start. Can I see the first show of hands?
Sesngakala manje nama ubani o ngafisukala, sizo paramse zanla besige loyo ofisukala ge ezengapambili.
Okay, this is the part where you speak. Yes, thank you very much. Can you please make your way to the... Yeah. Thank you very much. And also, before and after, we will sanitize... Yes, can I just get a few more? Because then we can just...
Agen kchole zinye izanja.
So we can let the process flow. Baba, if you just wait, let us just get a few more, then we'll start.
Uzolinda kanganike baba si chole nabanyi mvawalo kosi zo besesakalisa bakona.
Thank you very much, ma'am. You can, you can take the next seat.
Siabonga, unga eshala neslandelayo mvawalo baba.
Okay, let's go. I've identified you after the, after the... Thank you. Okay, let's start.
Uzoyanawe ngikpaulile singakalisa ge ba.
Ma ngibengelele abashonishwa, abasuragui paramelele tilkulu, nabashonishwa bakona abasuragui xayam tetu setu sagwazulatal.
I would like to greet all the honorables, the ones who are from the legislature and the ones who are from the legislature around here in KZN.
Si bongakulu uki mafigile bazose tulela lokabasa bazo uwa mugela izeturo zetu.
We want to thank you for coming and for coming to listen to our opinion.
Goda ogongpetega abi, ogongbo zeso obsho ngemo inuami.
What saddens me...
Obona isghalo zee mti.
Is to...
Umpagati ungeyako. Because this is now not even the one sixtieth of the population or the community of Mwelezani omhlatus.
It's to see that all the seats are empty because, as you can see, we don't even have a sixth of the people who are from Mwelezani.
So benga fisakwas uki mhlamba ngasakatucheleka lomhlangan. Right from i parame, guzo fe aguxayam tetu sagitwa zulatal, guzo fe agu maspalawe temhlatus. Imku telandele gile wutikumema silege, ihambege ase ngoba.
What I want to know is that when you were organizing this meeting at the parliament, from the par, the national parliament to the legislature down to the municipality, the organizing, was it done in a proper way?
Ngoba, loko ngushiso uki wangame na omhlangan. Lomhlanganige gwa nje ngama, nguzweli tere ngyshelo uki ngweli nyolo ngompa gati, taibo putuma oheba bumie, ndyankoli samsei shongu tumubad. Uman dagai seoga miyeni sakamu zesalaya Mwelezani wa P section 27.
I just want to apologize. My name is Mr. Mieni from...
Eh, P section Mwelezani omhlatus.
In B section Mwelezani in Mhlatusi. The reason why I'm saying this, it's because I myself, I heard about the meeting when I was traveling. Someone, someone told me that there is a meeting. I should hurry and come here just today.
Unfortunately, I was coming to the library, which is us here and located here, so I had to do my things at the library early and come, and come here.
Okjablisaka kulu uki atengiela pa e library ese duzani na kona la, ngiyowe zizinto zam, ngakongase ngitik ngono kenge ngjulila pangbonu tewe zalan.
So, kuyitola amasho uki xuka ba i kulu zete parame, zafigile khalo zee mti kanyee akomundu, and ne dokumento.
I'm disappointed that the officials, our officials from the parliament are here, but the chairs are empty. There are not enough people.
And even the dokumento kuliwa na wa, angan no makuliwa nganawa pepa uki sensei inputu wona ini, nama wadokumenta si chola ge, enka ba uki uma bek okanesege ase. Befanele kasa te saichola i dokumente sbeleka lomhlaganu, simena i dokumente, simo kulu nganu, woba ma ngubala.
Even the document we just received today, I think we supposed to receive it long time ago so that we could go through it and know exactly what the meeting will be about.
Because now la ulama pepa ngwa pete, buka ngi ilshoso lomhlatus svivinywa, biga ngi, bigi, 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 and then besuwa isamaro of the bill eskena yotineskaya zutle, kuwa yonaleo pili bilkale.
When you look at this law, actually this bill, we don't know what it's about. We just see the laws that are written in it. We not even sure what it's all about.
So, angazi lokonye bengisukmuzu uki, uchaleka njani. Abapati be etu smea, nama councila etu la emawatin, azisi wini uki kufane lasa azisi, uma azisi wa ayisi sweni nikusene skati.
That's all I wanted to say, that from organizing, did you tell the mayors, the councillors from around that you are going to have, were going to have a meeting like this? I'm not sure about that.
And I finally don't see this meeting being a success, success. Ngoba mhlamba ngola uki kona indo enzo itolaktina singaslu, uto sngasfane listi.
I don't think this meeting will be successful because we don't know anything about it. We have no idea what it's all about. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the second speaker and I'll respond. Although we said we are not going to respond and ask questions, but that submission calls for a response. And I think it's important that I be able to respond on that. But let's take the second submission.
Ngia azut bengshilo uki angaze ngai pendula imibuzo yana mmla. Njongo bo uki sinige entle beslale. Gotwa losuklo kusukpauli we, wiati ba kweni ngase leni kazwayo, ubakak uki ingani sesikulili tu besklona. Kubege.
Ngia bongampatu wahlelo.
Thank you to the one...
Ikama mononto wa wamzimela, wa kona la en Mwelezani, ngomunye osuka nje mpagatini angmele organization ngi lungi zelo mpagati.
I've already stated my name for the record, and I'm from Mwelezani. I'm not from any association or any party, but I am a member of the society that thought it important for me also to come and have some, a few words to say about this.
Eh, mpatu wahlelo indo kala en fisahu komenda ngayo wi electoral amendment bill.
The first thing I would like to be able to state something about, about this bill, Mr. Chair.
Igwo page three. Gu, I think it's item, yeah, page three, number E at the top, where we talk about by the insertion after the definition of presiding officer.
It is in page three?
Yes, the third page, not page three.
Oh, on the third page?
Oh, page three, it is page three.
Oh, no, it is indeed, page three.
Lagupaliwa kona e origin, origin on E, u origin uki by definition.
Can I just, can I just stop you there? Do we have copies of this?
Where E?
For, for the public? Yeah, so I see people are showing an indication of not having it. It's available in front. So can we just get someone to pass them out and also for members, please?
Na si ingati, nyotini itole na nguben bambe i kaza, eh, bale iparati iliwela pah uki be kona oparamayo. Aham, selizin ngati, kubenwas uki uma e kupaula, nipage niso was ba nsige kuelchikayo, ngenteni ibugayo, ngenteni azio. Na si ngobe zeyaluliswa.
If I can just ask you to, to pause for a few moments while we just get everybody to have the document?
Ku tiwa amasngamaga ngani je si ti ugnigeza onkumutukutaga ti che mu, ache teze as uki singani lapano maspotanga.
While we're doing that, the gentleman that's on, that was... Yeah. Can you please take the seat, your chair behind us so that you'll be next, yeah?
Tonisha wena ongimva ngatwa ngatata tisalus ngamva waké utade wetu lo e osase zwini. Wenzel uki naoe uguas paul, ma se kada.
No, no, just, just, just leave that, the one behind her that's on, you just turn it over, yeah. Thank you.
Eh, na sisaloo, yutata utegilekso na naoe, ai lisasake. Siaboa.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. You may proceed. Our humble apologies for... Can we also get for members? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may proceed.
Thank you.
Eh, gu E, the last, the last paragraph talks about the region.
E, e, la pahui paragraph uki na kukuluma e region.
By, by definition, Chair, I was expecting to see the district because in South Africa, we have national, provincial, district, and then local. I, I wouldn't be too sure about E region, what it represents in terms of geography. So I, I may need the clarity, somebody to explain to me if, if we talk about the region, we're still referring to the, the, the district. That's number one.
Ben funba ngikata lewa se ngaloku okpauli lapange ngere region. Eh, ngoba, uwa, uwa manje angatata lwa uku timasit region ngabas akulayo na ini lendu esiti i district nama esifunda, esenda esifunda ngandolo, nama njani mhlampeni ogonge lapak uki ngikata selewa se move. Nzingas uki iba mbengako nama onda ngowi ikoi ni oktanyundo.
Eh, thank you, Chair. E, the amendment bill as presented, Chairperson indicates eh that ama, that the independent candidates are now going to be allowed to take part in the national and provincial elections. That is what the amendment bill is saying as per the decision of the Constitutional Court.
Lom tetu is tribielo uzamukak suki eh abantu abazmele.
Chair Person, as we, as much as, or as I stand here, I support the bill that there must be changes to allow the independent candidates to take part as directed by the Constitutional Court, that's number one. The second part that is attached to number one, Mr. Chair Person... refers to the logistics as to how this is going to happen. I am not going to stipulate how it is going to happen, but I'm going to highlight some of the issues that are necessary in the present, in, in the, in the implementation to look at. Our democracy allows everybody to take part in the election. I can imagine 400 independent candidates in the national and provincial elections wanting to take part, meeting all the criteria. How are we going to make sure that we do not have a ballot paper that is as thick as 30 pages? The second thing is, I'm not a feminist, but I do know that South Africa is too patriotic. Now, in, in most cases, men have money more than women. A proportional representation talks about parties ensuring that there is representation between men, there is, there is fair distribution or there is fair allocation for both men and women. I am imagining a situation where because men have more money than women, we have a parliament that is full of men. How are we going, oh, there must be something that is going to regulate that there must be fair representation even when men and people register as independent. But there must, there must be some regulation to say we have exceeded a number of males who want to get, who want to be represented in parliament more than women. Therefore, there must be a space enough for both men and women to contest their elections as individuals or as independent candidates. Chair Person, the other concern that I want to put forward to this public participation... is that the independent candidates, when they want to contest their elections, they must also follow the same procedure as followed by political parties. There must not be any, eh, different treatment for them. That includes disqualifying them if there is anything wrong that they have done during the, the campaigns, eh, during the process of the elections. Mr. Chairman, that would be my submission for today, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you, we appreciate that. I must appreciate the specific concise submissions that you have made. I, before I move to the next speaker, I want to respond to the first speaker. So the process was one that called for electronic submissions between the 21st of January to the 21st of February. Then we had an opportunity for interested parties to make oral submission. And on the 1st and 2nd of March, which was last week, we had 14 representatives that indicated they wanted to make oral submission. This was done through a virtual platform and we ended up the process with 13 oral submissions and one that was not available. Then we started the process of public participation or public hearings across the country, making sure that we visit all nine provinces and this is where we start today. But my concern is bigger for concern as yours, Baba, about the attendance today. But I'm going to indicate what has been done before today. Firstly, we have different political parties represented on the Parliamentary Committee of Home Affairs. So all political parties would in turn have taken this information to their constituencies or to their political offices for dissemination. Then we have a unit called Public Participation within Parliament. And they make contact with the municipality that we are going to visit. And the report I received from the Public Participation Office is that they arrived at this municipality, met with the leadership and they identified this hall to have the hearing. The team also met with councillors in the municipality. They also facilitated meetings within wards, but unfortunately, not all councillors were able to deliver in terms of the meetings, meaning that some councillors called meetings and canceled while others did have their meetings. The focus was also on Mshlatuze because it would be the nearest wards around. There was also interaction with the provincial legislature as well as PCOS. PCOS are parliamentary constituency officers. And then there was also print media and radio media in terms of flightzing the public hearings. We also have Parliament's media and communications through our various platforms and social media and print media that were issuing regular statements on the public hearings. I must say that the bill or the electoral amendment bill may not be appealing to some persons and that's why they would choose not to want to attend. However, we don't want to devalue the number of people that did attend today. We appreciate your presence and attendance and we are here to listen to you as concerned citizens. Okay, then the other one is just to clarify that the referral or reference to region is constituency or in some ways you may refer to them as the municipality, whether it's a district or it's a metro. Now you can't say district because then it will be specific to a district. We also have metros and we have districts, so it's in reference to constituencies. So when you have the provincial legislature and then under that you have smaller sort of subregions. Thank you, I hope that clarifies it, so you can take the podium.
Good day everyone, my name is councillor Sphysile Makubane. I'm an ex-councilor at King George District Municipality.
And I represent the Democratic Alliance. Can I ask you to use your shop steward voice or councillor's voice?
First and foremost, I would like to say that we support the bill in its current form. I think it's long overdue, the DA has been talking about direct representations for members in, in the National Assembly and provincial legislatures. So we welcome the, the fast tracking, obviously guided by the dissemination by the Constitutional Court that should be done within the next 24 months. Thank you. I would, I would like the House to start on, I think it's page three, under 31B, the requirements and qualifications for independent candidates to contest. I know that these are just amendments which are being highlighted here, but was, was it intentional to include the requirement under the disqualifications that persons who have been sentenced at least to torment imprisonment cannot be candidates as independents? Because you might find that people who have exhausted party processes use the opportunity to contest as independents with these hanging issues behind. And maybe the question will be to find out why that exclusion was not specifically made here or maybe it's provided for in the actual act and not just in part of what is being amended.
Can I just interject, sorry? I just want to clarify that we're not going to be able to respond or answer. So it'll be important that if you're raising something that you feel is unanswered, that you raise it in that form, but also tell us what your submission or proposal is. Because the idea of the public hearing is to listen to what you are saying as a community and also what is your suggestion or proposal in terms of amendments? That, so if you think there's something that's unanswered or missing, what is it and what do you think should be there? Thank you.
Thank you for that guidance. And I think that the, the, the submission would be that under 31B, supported by 31C under non-compliance and, and, and 31E on grounds of objection, that it be included, that should members of the public be aware that the candidate, as is the case currently, you can't be a councillor if you've been sentenced to torment imprisonment and I know that you can't be a member of Parliament as well. And I think that the submission would be that be expressly included as part of the objections for independent candidates as well. That if you've been sentenced to imprisonment, you cannot be eligible and there's grounds for objection also as part of the amendments. Any other submissions? My point that I'm trying to make is that it needs to be clear, not that it is an objection to how it's put, but it should be clear that there's one pool. Because when you have a national system that is divided into two, the provincial one is mute on the composition of how independents become eligible. Thank you for that guidance. And I think that the submission would be that under 17, there's no determination that says what percentage of the provincial seats are going to be eligible for candidates. The assumption is that based on the quota of votes, all the seats at the legislature are going to be subject to the quota and the parties that submit party lists are also going to be the same pool of seats that are going to be allocated by independent candidates. Unlike in the National Assembly where you have a division. One is compensatory seats for the National Assembly and the other half is for the regions where independent candidates will be eligible. In the legislature, there's just one pool. I don't know whether that was intentional, again. My point that I'm trying to make is that it needs to be clear, not that there's an objection to how it's put, but it should be clear that there's one pool. Because when you have a national system that is divided into two, the provincial one is mute on the composition of how independents become eligible. Just to correct the translation, the division at the National Assembly is specific, but the division in the province is not clarified. It just says, it just gives the quota only. There's no implicit explanation that you have a compensatory seat for the parties and then you have, I want to say sub-regions because the province is already a region, a sub-region for the province where then the independents will be eligible. Or the clause as it's read is that there's one pool of seats, KZN has 80 seats. Then that 80 seats equally, parties will submit lists and independents will also contest on that 80 without the division. Thank you. And then lastly, maybe this is also again, when the parliamentary committee is doing its deliberations, to consider the consequences of the regional lists as they currently stand. I did a rough calculation looking at, looking at, under Schedule 1A4, which deals with regional seats, under page nine. Under, it says, well, we were advised not to quote the amendments, but under this fixed seats that using scientifically-based data in respect of the voters' representations by interested parties, under this calculation, Gauteng and KwaZulu-Natal occupy 50% of the regional seats, based both on population and based on the amount of votes that were received. We had 17 million votes in 2019, Gauteng received almost, I think, 4. something million and KZN received 3.68 million. That makes out about 50% of the regional seats that are going to be going to parliament. So the unintended consequence is that half the, or 25% of, sorry, 50% of the regional seats are going to come from two provinces and 25% of members of parliament are going to come from these two provinces, which then also indirectly affect the intended consequence of the act which is to allow for representation. So more people are going to be more represented than others. So that's something that we ask.
Can I just stop you there? What is your suggestion on that?
Exactly like I said, it is to bring to the committee to consider the consequences. This is a draft. I know that Parliament will consider the final submissions and as part of those deliberations, to consider the unintended consequences of representation in the overall system. And maybe there must be a look at the scientific approach that will be used and maybe in addition to how the, from time to time, the minister responsible for this act will be able to determine a scientific system that allows for equitable representation when it comes to the regional seats. Thank you. So I'm going to start from the last part going forward. And I'll give you the most simplest explanation or understanding. For example, at a local government election, you have Etukweni municipality that has 111 wards. So you would have ward councillors contesting and then you have a PR list. That will make up the Etukweni council. While you go to a district municipality and you find that there are 11 wards. You probably have either 10 or 11 PRs and in a total of 21 councillors that make up the council. So can we give that municipality 222 councillors and give this municipality 222 councillors if they do not have the same population and geographic space? So it's important to note that when you look at Gauteng and KwaZulu-Natal, that your seats, sorry, the seats allocated for the entire assembly or legislature is based on the votes cast in that particular province. And the size of the legislature is determined by that. So hence you're going to find that other provinces will have lesser seats in the legislature than others. Secondly, the bill that you have in front of you is not seeking, well, in terms of the proposals that are here, and obviously it's for comment, does not speak about changing the number of seats in parliament. What it is suggesting is that you allow for independents to contest the same pool. And what this means is that you can contest either the space of the provincial legislature or the National Assembly. But what it says is that you decide which space you contest. In that you can't contest the National Assembly and provincial legislature. The reason for that is because an independent is one, so you can only take up one seat. So if you meet the threshold in terms of the number of votes that you acquire, you will then be able to take up a seat in the space that you have contested. If I also ask you to refer to page nine, 10, and 11, you'll be able to understand the scientific approach to how the seats are allocated. It talks about a first round, a second round, et cetera, but it talks about how independents who meet the threshold will be allocated and thereafter we look at political parties in terms of allocations. And in the current electoral system, we cast two ballots. So in this, it is still asking for that to remain and you will then determine in terms of a provincial ballot and you determine in terms of a national ballot. It seeks to also keep the 200 seats directly elected national assembly and 200 via your regional seats. So what we normally call that, national to national and provincial to national, less. Yes, sir. While I was speaking, no, no, the speaker that, yeah, are you clarified after I've spoken? You had your hand up while I was speaking. No, no, it was after, before you, Hans, while I was answering, yeah. Thank you, Chair. I was raising because I think you had said earlier that you were not going to respond to the submissions we provided. And I think what then with your response, I had to clarify some of the things which you misinterpreted in my speech and I was just trying to stop the, because we said that we support the bill. But what I was raising was submissions for consideration, that, yeah.
Thank you. No, no, thank you, thank you. Yeah, and we want to proceed without having to do that because we don't want to dialogue, but I just thought that it's important. I also don't want you to leave here not understanding something and it was important to just, yeah. Okay, we're going to move on. Are there any other submissions? Anybody else? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Okay, so we've got three in this round. If we can just turn over the chairs for them so that we'll just move one after the other. So we're just going to take your submission and then we're going to move to the second speaker and the third speaker. Thank you very much.
Nice to see some of you again and I consider you friends. And to those of you who I don't know, welcome to Mshlatuze. Good morning. Just some quick submissions, Chair. The first one is, is I think that councillor Makubane raises a very important issue of the representation and my... I think that, I cannot prescribe to your portfolio committee, but I do think that a constitutional legal opinion needs to be sought in terms of two to three provinces representing the majority of parliament at a national level from a constitutional perspective. You know, one of the cornerstones of our democracy is inclusiveness and letting everybody be a participant in the political framework. And if you have such a large contingent of people within parliament, okay, we'll leave legislatures out, but in parliament only from two provinces, I think you might come across some kind of legal challenge. Chair, a quick point in terms of political party funding. Again, in terms of fairness, how, and I did read the document, but how would government intend to fund independent candidates? Political parties, the mainstream political parties within South Africa have of course got parliamentary, legislative and other political party funding. Yet if one enters into an election as an independent, what mechanism is there to fund that independent person? Do we put them on the same financial footing as we put another political party, for example? I didn't see that in the legislation and perhaps that's something that needs to be looked into both from a financial and also an inclusiveness, constitutional and fairness point of view.
Chair, a quick point in terms of political party funding. Again, in terms of fairness, how, and I did read the document, but how would government intend to fund independent candidates? Political parties, the mainstream political parties within South Africa, have of course got parliamentary, legislative and other political party funding. Yet if one enters into an election as an independent, what mechanism is there to fund that independent person? Do we put them on the same financial footing as we put another political party, for example? I didn't see that in the legislation. And perhaps that's something that needs to be looked into, both from a financial and also an inclusiveness, constitutional and fairness point of view.
Kuti wena ngonkulu ben teda, uki kuti kuwoko onke, kubonele lwe loku eh kuti kusazwiwe, uki uma umtazmele. Ngabe ye nalolu bazolo kaso abaye balthole osopoli tiga ngoba besenjala, nene, ezingo sondonsima. Bona, beuti bakasigya lwe gunkaga na nabo, ukabekwa zaba besima mepele, beka zaba ma pegane nazo ekani. Kuti ngoba beka eh funa eh besi besi betate, betageleke pansha ngayo kuti inketa bena yo. Norma amancha bena nao eh besi utata gusbuisela esinkantolo, lasu ti konasama ngadela nekona. Naboba nabobe funa beedu, uki babambi kaza eh elisoga naa.
Thank you Chair. Finally, a final point. We tentatively support the bill or the amendment bill as it stands at the moment, but we will leave the mandate obviously to yourselves in the national assembly. But I'd just like to say that, as you said, this is not everybody's cup of tea. And I think that there needs to be a massive voter education campaign that needs to be rolled out once this bill is further amended or in its such adopted. Because if, you know, members of the public who have had sight of this amendment bill, you know, certainly it's technical and battle to understand all the concepts of it, then the ordinary voter out there seriously needs to understand it. Because we, I can predict, we are going to see a massive number of independent candidates coming forward. And we are, like the lady explained earlier, going to have hundreds, if not thousands of candidates on a voter's ballot. And that is something that certainly needs to be explained to the voting public for this bill to in itself become something that is tangible and it becomes something, a living document that affects people's lives. Thank you, Honorable Chair, Honorable Members. I appreciate your time.
Kuti wena ngonkulu ben nga tanda kuti ngapamba magutatwe loku eh uzé kufuye kulelisi ngalo kuti ukbasege akichelwa. Akate umuksoa ban tu beka zaba ma bewechise eh utate katriswe, utipe ngoba. Eh aguona intelu lagowo onkumutu kuti ati aguzwe. Eh nakon de foot ngopelele loku onkunye tewela pakanti kuin te ballegile. Beka ngoba iskulmes ngapambili, iskesayo satimasese zmele. Eh ya, aupege nji ikasi selis kugete si amaku la mane. Eh uki yotati tibitate, ifesbe umti iti, ititi abantu ingapsaba usinzo. Kuti ngalo loko eh uke tuba eh aguti ngapamba ma enziewe, ai falewe injula melo eh itati palelwa ban tu beka zaba bechise. Betiba ivuma bevampi kazange balibamba kokpelele ngoba bayasutu kuti isho nganga. Kuti geemake esababonga ngono ni naa.
Thank you very much, Honorable Heinz Debo. We're going to move on to the next speaker, but I just want to make a special... Is it okay if we get the speaker to finish and then you just do a summary?
It is okay, it is actually okay for me, but Chair, I might indicate that I'm actually here for Africans and I just wanted to find out through you if we're not leaving any other person out that is African.
Oh, okay. No, 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 you're not.
No, thank you, thank you. Then I'll be happy to ask.
I'm very impressed that you're here to do Africans, but we're doing Isizulu.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.
Siabong.
Morning to members of the legislature and members of parliament that are with us here. I'm speaking to Prid Kondwana from Cocteau. We took a liberty to come here because we've learned lessons from local government. Because that's where we have independent candidates. And we've seen some of the few things, the new developments that are taking place there.
Ben kasa umsonishwage kuti silapa si bago cocteau sese kuti naati sisopalewa uwente besiswe. Ngoba kubalegile onke uwenzigayo kunumthelela naktiina. Eh ubesabingelele, ngono ni nage eh kuktoane jobazi kor.
Sir, I just want you to clarify, your submission is being made on behalf of?
For department.
Okay.
I'm a person in the department. The development asked me to come to the session.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, we at the unions to include independent candidates.
Boswago vasnonutu lapa ngasatu sinuti ai lapa, gi lapa eh kamendomnyang. Utigota bengeti angubeke nguxo balbasia ksega loku kpelele.
Just, my translator's in top, we're going to do a summary after the speaker. Sure.
Yeah.
Nakho.
Yeah, so, and I've heard two honourable member indicating that, what is the reason for independent candidates to be part in parcel of the provincial and national assembly? And I've seen some of the few concessions has been made here. But I have some little bit worries that although they should be of equitable in terms of members, but when I went and checked the issues of vacancy, it's very clear that if you're a member, candidate member, independent candidate member, if there's a vacancy or you die during the term, there will be, no, the position will not be filled. And I do understand that it talks to individual. But when you look at the amendments, it says if one wants to participate in a legislature or participate in the national assembly, a party might choose, a party. So which means the person may not even come on his own, but a certain party can choose him. But now the situation here is that if we as people were in the interest of Prid being in national assembly, because the points that he makes, it can change things. But because by call of nature, Prid decided to die and then there's no Prid anymore. And then you find that there's no activism that is taking place there. Then as a public, because they are there to save us as a community members, what's going to happen now? Because it's very specific to an individual, but it's not specific, it's not talking to a party. The party is eligible because it's got so many members. I think that that might be a great area in future. I know we're working with communities at a local level. You'll see these things developing. So we should be having something in mind for future, for those people who might like Opride participating in that space. And another issue, once you say independent candidates must become a member in provincial and national. I can tell you, I might say I want Opride to become a president in future. I can tell you, we've got a lot of councillors who are independent and we know where they are coming from, some of them. And you could see in councils what they're doing currently right now. If they want, because aspiration, they want to make sure that they lead with example in the council. What will happen, someone who wants to become independent candidate or people who wants, because now it's a democratic society and people, they feel that they have to choose someone they like. Because people, when they are in council or legislature, those people, they take the needs of their people, not the needs of their political party. So the direction that is taking place now, we can see where it's happening. So now, in future, do we see the future where we have an independent candidate as a president? I'm not going to answer on that one. Because in the country, when we are coming up with amendments, we have to serving a vision in mind. I can't include someone that will have some limitations. It's like taking a marcos to become section eighty-one in council. So they need to make sure that there is something that is happening there for them, not them to make numbers. But we want to see the impact of them adding value in parliament for them being there. Lastly, Chairperson, I do understand that the document is made in English. But committee members that are here, most of them, they speak Isizulu. You'll find that some of the ways that are here, they don't understand. I'll make an example. The compensation seat, one will have to understand what one does it mean to compensation seat, forfeiting seat. Because when we live here, they must go and tell some of the people out there to say, I've been in an engagement, but they are thinking that we're being raised and we do have to have an understanding of some of those terms so that they can understand. And lastly, Chairperson, and I assume that the same calculation that we do, that we did during the past elections in local government, because for us, we are doing for our own, when we are doing it for council and other things, will be is the same. Because we'll find that other people wanted to know that the system that is being done, that was done in previous election, in terms of the calculation, will be the same that is done for national and provincial. I'm putting this in the layman's point of view. I don't want to be very strategic and talk above the level of the people that are here in this meeting, but for us to understand. Because when there are issues, there are safety delivery protests or there are issues that are taking on the ground, someone needs to explain this document to them. I submit, Chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to clarify that the document has been translated into all languages. And I was just confirming with the team that they did actually carry Isizulu. Yes, they did. Yes, there is. So it is available, sir. When you entered to register, you would have had the option of taking it in English or Isizulu. That's the reason why we even have interpreters. We are a government that cares about all our people.
Espara misoge siga umphlonishwela panga pambili, begu kuti ama abandabazmele, abangeneluke tso. Eh guzo gwenze gani, ngoba umpakati lapa umketalo umundu, usuge umbon kuti uzotali ndime ballegile. Kor abandabanjalo genze kutolti ashona. Beset ngabine no lhelolo kuti ubanige manjo sezon geneindawe ni akilapanama gwenzigile washona. Kantila baba ma krembu bona, kwehlu gile ngoba ma umtemeleli krembu. Eh uma ngabe gwenze ge shona, yukwembuliya wazukfagomo nislalu insaki. Kotwa lis esinye sala snginamundu, manje izosi ngatwaga njani gilelo indabalayo. Esinye agiskalo begu kuti injo ngoba umpakati wonkanu lapa ukulmuli mdezi zul. Loko tama pepe swapete awuli mdezi ngisi, guzo ba ingi nguti abantu basuge laba otazele omunyo umundu. Ukutumplanga nubupatilene ngan ngoba ma pepe awa aweka wesizul. Wasep kaza ge umphlonishwa ngapambili slalo. Uki imbeleni gokona ukunyu shiwe, goli mdezi zul, guze umpakati guazu bon kuti utaba belpatilene nan.
Thank you. I just want to see by indication, I know there was a gentleman with the, yes, that was going to speak next. Are you still speak? Thank you. Please take the podium. Is there anyone else? I just want to take an indication because then I would know how to direct our meeting. Is there anyone else that would like to make a submission? Yes, sir. Thank you. Can you please take a seat behind him? Is there anyone else? Thank you. Can you please take a seat behind him? Is there anyone else? I'm going to take all speakers now so that we can then summarize at the end of it. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a submission? Please, can you take a seat behind him? Thank you.
Sekwe luku tibo ngendengama njeh abane espara misaba funuksetula bezela pani lhalwe ni zo wetulis paramis uguze bakulume. Ngoba sekzo tatwa zonki paramis omanje eh gubobon kabantu besegunige zwa ingazelo etpete.
Okay, this is the final call. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a submission?
Ogoktunani, usayakono munye ofunuku wetulis paramis.
Thank you, thank you very much. So this is going to be all four of you speaking. We will get a summary interpretation after each speaker. If the speaker is comfortable to present in Isizulu, please do so and we'll get a translation of English as a summary. Yeah, we're going to take all four of you and then summarize. Thank you.
Nengane kululege uma ngabofisukulmes zulu, ngakuluma eh sizo beses thola ukunyu shawaleo ngakuluma.
Okay, thank you Chair. Greetings to the national parliament. Councillors from different political parties and political parties present here and the community of Ngwelizana. Ikamalame nguspelele wa kumete, Wat Councillor, I say Wat twenty-eight, coming from the African National Congress. Klampage ohwami, uku shuku tese ANC, we support the amendment bill for independent to participate in the provincial legislature and national parliament with the following submission. And we believe that from the PR system allows better representation of women, youth and other marginalized groups. So as ANC supports option as included in the amendment bill, we probably support as best option in implementing of the national court. But some of izin esbona kutsene isngaba i-challenge kakulu has eh obote ba ma pilot papers. If sizo vumela onkumundu, kutsabe iphat eh ye independent. Esabonu kutsene uma onkumundu ekona participate eh gui voting. Melu bekoninhlale kutsene si kontrola nganjali in terms of i-threshold before ikamalo umundu lingene. Gui pilot paper, I think melu bekoninhlale kutsi control, kutsi mtlampu umundu ebene manamaz ati zukwazwa onkunye na gui pilot paper. And also any issue ekona kutsi mtlamba ne, we know kutsene ama list from i-provincial legislature and national parliament. Kutsene in some issues, mtlampu experience, masibu kutsene umumundu engasavili gui list from i-political partyake, kusinsakati gephumefunuka independent isite. So melu smlambi sikategnal, kusomatwa abazotka mwa nganjalo, kutsi mtlamba ne. Melu bekonamtlamba i-period, show kutsi mtlamba before onkenwe, mtlampu wazuk participate sa gui independent. Eh melu mtlampu niskatissize onavili gui political party osuwa giwon. Kunkat kutsi mtlampu twelve months before or six months, any period, mtlampu osuwa zuk sibuke. Eh mtlampu i-legislation, nama labakshawo kumtsesu kutsu umundu engafiki, mtlampu namtlange ngavili gui list. Besebona ngaksa se kichi, mesi sewa register gui independent, kusasbalagile kutsi mtlambi sngabine list and eh wazuki kontrola leontole. So I think mtlampu those few submission, mtlampu sizo wazuk, mtlampu sibuke lituze. Eh nihwazuk tilegalale, mtlampu kutsi ama independent eh wazna participate sa gui provincial in gui national legislature. Mtlampu ogunye in the future, mtlampu mesoba nama gatherings and jengalawa, mtlampu satingutipili. Sibene mtlampu at least seven days before a public hearing, kusuwa zuk wenskat kutsifu ndesi understand. And then sikuwa zuk kutsi benama submission, sikuwa zuk swalete, ebene mntu waz, mtlampu amengagement and jengalawa. Niabong.
Shortly, he was just mentioning that the candidates, the list, sometimes the person may be representing a political party. But then if he fails there and then he changed and wants to be an independent, the concern is that that should be addressed, it has to be controlled so that the person doesn't leave the political party because he's not appearing in the list and trying to find a way in through being independent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ikama onlelele, uzale ntsantla ngamlabisbon, ilu ngalumpakatsa sengwelizane from Wat twenty-seven, Etjablak. This is one of the bad effects, Chair. Because the council has spoken and indeed we're going to differ. As because we are in a public participation meeting. These are effects of the dissemination of the notice of the sitting or of the meeting that we are in currently. I've heard the Chair elaborating that they used political parties for dissemination of this particular electoral amendment bill. They used municipalities, provincial legislature, media, radio and print media. Now my question or comment over this will be to seek clarity on the following. How have the national assembly, be it the provincial legislature, have regulated or guided the process of this amendment bill? Because we need to take into cognizance that we live in a state that is democratically led by numerous ideologies. Hence we are having a constitutional right of freedom of association, a political choice, a constitutional choice of a political right to every single one of us, su umpakat. Now the approach of this electoral amendment bill is on a clear oversight, Chair. That it's indicative, it is pulling out the political freedom that was once fought for before ninety-four. Now, I personally don't wish this bill to come to work or to come into, or to even materialize because of the efforts set. Hence we will see much more inequalities, less leadership, public accountability to the majority of the South Africans if individuals are allowed to contest or let's say they have immersed. Many of the movers, they would have less responsibility in terms of public accountability. And to the interest... and to the interest of the civilians. If individuals are allowed or they are afforded an opportunity to contest such, obviously we will see a strengthened individual interest of people. Hence, we are even saying it in the current existing political parties. My recommendation, hence before I even name my recommendations, there are a lot of spillover effects. The efforts speakers have mentioned, what if the individual gets or becomes a deceased in the current term of office? What if the individuals doesn't come to a full sense of accountability to the majority of the South Africans? So those are a lot of spillover effects that would come through. Now my recommendation would be to say, as a democratic state, it will start with us to stick or align ourselves with political parties whom strategically obtains an interest of the people it's had. Let's remember, our democratic constitution accommodates us all, but let us not allow ourselves to accommodate a flock of beds while we only have one stone at hand. Let us not be dismantled or shaken and be decentralized by accommodating further bills, policies or even by laws that won't assist the vision as civilians that we have with our country. We wish to see ourselves as a well-developed state one day. This current government is currently being so wishy-washy about the view that the civilians on the ground want about the country itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next speaker?
I'm Malaami Nguspelelewa Kumete, AC ward twenty-seven. I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you. I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you. I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you.
Thank you. Just wait for the translation. Thank you.
So briefly, he is concerned that this bill, if it is passed, it will favor the rich people, not the poor, those that are able to afford to enter into the campaigns. And also the president has mentioned that there are a lot of people who are crooks around and what will happen is these people will take advantage of this situation if this bill is going to be passed.
Thank you. I just want to clarify because I think there was a request that I put my mask on. The only reason I had it off was because I've been speaking as the Chair quite often and it means taking off, putting on, taking off. But I'm also quite far away from both my colleagues as well as yourself. So I just wanted to clarify. It didn't mean that I'm any superior, that we just don't want only you to wear a mask and not us. So let me apologize for that. But yeah, we're going to move on to, I think this is our last submission.
I would like to state clearly, we support the electoral amendment bill as the African National Congress. But the practicality of the system as it is currently contained in the bill, we argue the Home Affairs Committee to consider these challenges carefully as they may cause unintended consequences that can harm our democracy. To the world, we want to check like, you know, if we are independent, as well, like we are independent, like we are independent, like criteria, we are independent. Like fifty percent are males, fifty percent are females, like fifty percent are male and fifty percent are female. If we are independent, we are independent, we are independent. We are political parties, we are political parties. Yes, we are exercising the democratic process, but we are independent.
Yes, I agree in a sense with what has been proposed. We do not have any objections to it. But let's look at the logistics of this. Here we have parties, many as possible, all with multicolors, all similar at some instance because we have experienced this previously. My concern is that how do we combat that without, yes, hampering on other people's rights? Because it has happened in a previous occasion. So to me, the concern is precisely that, that whilst we are mindful of the fact that it is a democracy and everyone has to do what they want to do, but let's take into account the feasibility of what we are talking about. That's my concern.
Thank you very much. I am now going to just give you some parting comments and the process that is going to be followed. Firstly, let me appreciate and thank every one of you for making the time to be here today and we also appreciate the submissions that we have received. Thank you to councillors, members of parliament in the provincial legislature, but most importantly, our community and citizens of this country. Thank you very much. So the process that's going to be followed is that we will take all the submissions that we receive from all the public hearings over the next month. It will then be compiled into a draft report that will be presented to the committee. It will then go through a process of finalization before it is then presented before parliament. It will be debated and then obviously voted on in terms of what the recommendations are. That will then go through a process. Remember, we also need to then take that bill to the NCOP and if they choose to do further consultations at a provincial level, then that will also happen before the actual bill is finalized. But I must also say that we were given a timeframe by the court, which is twenty-four months and the twenty-four months ends in June. However, there has been an acceptance in terms of processes that we should apply for an extension. However, that's not going to deter the work that has to be done. So we are continuing with the process of public participation while we are still asking for an extension, particularly because there's still the process of the NCOP to go through. So we just want to assure you that no decision has been made, but all submissions are going to be taken and all contributions. And with that, I want to thank all of you for being here today. Thank you very much and thank you to the honourable members and the staff. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.